This conference will now be recorded.
The agenda, does anyone have any changes additions to the agenda as presented? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I got a second by Bruce Wolf. So if there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the agenda is approved as presented. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the truth in taxation. And Mike, I assume you're going to do a summary presentation and then we'll open it up for any comments from the public if we have any at all.
That's, that's correct. Just to confirm that previous action, Chuck, you were the motioner on that, were you not?
Yes, I made the motion for the agenda and Bruce was the second.
Okay, thank you. Well, there is the possibility that, you know, this could be one of my last presentations on this. And I talked with Patty and she said I had to keep it down to a minimum of about 45 minutes. I know.
She's saying four to five? Four to five minutes? Four to five, that's right. Okay.
That sounds more like Patty. That's the Patty we know.
Yep, there you go.
You don't know how disappointing that is. We go through all of this work to provide all of this information and nobody wants to hear it. That, I know you've all lived it and so I will try to just hit a few of the pages. Probably starting out page two, which is really the, the good news for everybody is that the preliminary levy that the council first adopted back on September 14th versus where we're at tonight here on December 7th is the, the levy in itself has been reduced by a little over $119,000. The tax rate has come down 1.4% and the decrease in the actual tax levy percentage is down about 2.7%. So the process has worked well that the council adopted the preliminary levy. We've held workshops and budget review in October and November. And so the notices that people receive, they will see a reduction on the city side in accordance with the summary information that we've got here. Page three, I'm going to let people kind of read those things. I think Ken's got a couple of slides here on page three and four that deal with the some budget notables. And I, I think those are very well worth reading as far as changes. Our budget for this year in the general fund is about $5.1 million, up about $91,000 or 1.8% over 2020. So we've done a pretty good job, I think, in holding the line on the proposed budget for next year. Thus the result of the property tax levy being able to come down. But a number of notable things that are worth looking at in that page. When you look at the breakdown of why is the general fund, why is the property tax changing for 2021? Ken will go to page four and leave the notables. That in the general fund that in addition to just personnel costs for wages, bike, PRA, health, there's also an increased contribution to the fitness and aquatic center under the joint powers agreement that we have with the school. So the general fund is up a little over $100,000 or 3%. However, debt service has been reduced by 50,000 or about 5% because of the recent refinancing refunding of four outstanding bond issues and the refinancing of the 2010 Phillips Square apartment bonds that were issued by the Scott County CDA. There was no change in the EDA levy. Thus our total property tax levy is up just under 50, 51,000 or about 1.2%. Easiest way I think we can show you what that looks like is on page five. The, how is the local, how is a dollar of your property taxes being spent? For every dollar that you contribute, about 70 cents, 77 cents on that dollar goes to the general fund. And you can see that that's broken down with public safety garnering about 31 cents of that 77 cents. Or it comprises about 40% of the general fund budget. 22 cents is related to debt service, payments of principal and interest on outstanding bonds. And then basically one cent to economic development. So that's as easily a way as I can break that down and provide that to our listeners in the general fund that I'd be remiss if I didn't have Ken maybe scroll through some of the pictures. I won't go through all of the 20 accomplishments. But if you at least kind of scroll through some of the pictures on the things that we've dealt with and accomplished this year is obviously the pandemic has been a big item. Residential construction has had another outstanding year. Ken and his departmental employees have dealt with the construction of 42 new residential units this year, which is a big uptick here in three of the last five years. So nice work in that area. We made partial progress on the downtown highway 19 Main Street reconstruction project on the very west end of the project. We also see a new roundabout. What does that give us now? Six roundabouts. This one's over to the southeast of Coburn's. So public works wise, some, some work there. We finished the bio solids mixing project at wastewater. Not something very visible and out front, but still very critical in how we handle sludge and wastewater and going through the whole process out there. So that took us a bit on the economic development front. We're seeing major changes here with Hy-Vee with the, their purchase and remodeling of the former Speedway gas station. And then Hy-Vee is in the process of remodeling the former Shopko building. We're expecting that that probably won't open up until maybe June or July of this next year. Directly north of that area, we are fortunate enough that we've got QuickTrip too on the east end that has a different traffic pattern than what they see on the west end. And so that whole development with the installation of roads and utilities and QuickTrip has been a big project for the staff. And then finally, we've got some improvements down at Memorial Park with the foundation work being put in for the new, new veterans memorial and the new zipline. And Ken will talk a little bit more about that later tonight. And then the start and the work on the new shelter at Heritage Park. And then lastly, not to be outdone, it's all of the work that utilities employees have done this year with all of the new directional boring and installation of electric lines. And I'm trying to remember, I think they've put in over 25,000 feet or between almost four and five miles of underground electrical and then also electrical lines being run to a number of our larger establishment, Felzers, QuickTrip, and a couple others I can't think right offhand. So the utilities has been very, very busy this year and it's nice that the weather has cooperated. I really don't have, if I'm being held to four to five minutes, there's really not a lot I can add that we've talked about why the, what the general fund budget is. The other budgets that comprise the taxation, as I touched on already, that debt service is down from a million to 950. The ED budget is the same at 50,000. And so collectively, the increase, as I said earlier, in the property tax levy was only 50, just under $51,000 or up 1.18%. And so, you know, the, the readers can take a look at going through some of this. But if we're trying to keep it relatively simple, the projects, the capital portions of the budget, you know, all of what that looks like. And then Ken, if you keep going here, I think there's just a couple more slides that I might touch on. I already talked about the debt service being down 50,000, ED data basically the same level. This is just some information for those that aren't familiar with the taxation processes, how our taxes determine. So there's a way to go through and take a look at the formula that we kind of use to take a look at doing that. Let's see, what else has he got? That just shows the, the growth in our tax base. We're up about 7.8% going into next year. This is eight straight successive years of growth in our tax base, which is a good indication of the stability generally from everything I've heard is that seven periods or seven different informational series will, will be a pretty good indicator of the trend. And we've got that now with eight successive years. We're expecting as we look ahead to 2022, that we'll see relatively good growth in that tax base number as well. So very good indicator for the city. The rest is just more informational. I guess I, one last thing before we leave is Ken, if you could go to the chart that kind of maps out where our city's tax rate, keep going. Our tax rate has come down, I'll talk a little bit about this and then the graph and then I'll end it and take any questions. But the tax rate that's proposed for this next year is at 51.35. And that's down from what it was eight years ago at the high of about 74.5. So we've come down about 23.18% in our tax rate. As you can see, and when you look at that graphically on the next page, we're the blue line. You can see we've, we've made good progress in the last eight years trying to bring that city tax rate down as it relates to the operational aspects of where we're at financially. And in part of that really is in, in good response to the eight years of increase that we've seen in the tax base, that consciously we've been able to bring that rate down and improve that picture competitively. So the next pages are all supporting documents that go with that information. And so I won't go into that. We threw the links into the PowerPoint presentation, just passed this about understanding property taxes and then why your property taxes change from year to year. There's a couple of PowerPoints that'll get you to some informational documents that will help you understand that a little bit better. And then lastly, on page 47 is that there's four property tax relief programs that if you go to the Department of Revenue website through the Department of Revenue and search property tax refund, there are programs available if you meet the criteria in that program. And in closing, Ken, on the budget preparation that, you know, significant thanks and assistance to Patty and the whole finance department and all of the department heads that have been involved in this process. And as there was discussion before the start of the meeting, this is the last budget process that Glenn Stike, our public works director will be involved with, that he's going to be retiring here in February. And he's been with the city for a little over 40 years. And so we're going to miss Glenn's involvement in this process, whether it be in the general fund or wastewater or storm water. We certainly are going to miss his involvement in the process. And then the last slide we have is just as, as you mentioned at the beginning, Chuck, with this information, now would be the time to solicit any public comments or questions with the idea and the understanding that the budget and the property tax levy won't be adopted until December 21st. But now is the time to take any public input that might exist.
Okay. With that in mind, if there's anyone from the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment, you'd be so kind to state your name and your address and voice your questions or comments. Okay, I guess I do not see anyone willing to, on the Zoom that's going to make a public comment. So I guess with that in mind, I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's not any other questions out there or comments. Okay, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the public hearing is closed. Before we move on to the next item, does anyone on the council have any comments or questions for Mike? Or any, any of the department heads that are present right now?
I'd like to just thank you all very much. Looks like you did real detail work. Thank you. Patty, you were.
Thanks, Rick. If there's no other comments, I'd like to thank, also thank Mike and all the department heads, Patty, Glenn, Bruce, Ken. Again, you guys did a great job. I know this was my last go around with the public taxation meeting. And Mike, I want to commend you on the, the brevity of, of your summation. But with that in mind, I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And we are blessed to have Bruce Reimers here to present the electric and water budget. Welcome, Bruce.
Thanks, guys. On behalf of the New Prague Utilities Commission, I'll present the budget that was approved last week, Monday. And if you can all see it, I'll share my screen. I more or less just scanned in the packet and that way I can kind of just go through it as we're talking here. I don't, I don't have quite the sophistication that Ken does with their slides, but we'll roll through this as best I can here. And I'll, I'll start with the water budget. If you guys want to bring that packet up or we have it in front of you, I think. Everybody can see the screen, right? Yep.
Yep.
Regards to the management statement. It's the overall goal of the New Prague Utilities Water Department is our commitment to the community and providing safe, reliable water supply. In the past several years, we've been able to change our focus of our budget by not having major CIP projects. Obviously that's changed here in 2020 with the start of the Main Street projects. And we'll continue here for several years, requiring the water department to do some bonding again for CIP projects. And the cost of these major CIP projects is estimated to be about 3.2 million over the next four years. 1.6 million, you can kind of see in my notes here for just the 2020, 2021 Main Street project alone. Forecast for 2021, the water budget is projected forecast the financial operation of the New Prague Utilities Commission. New Prague Utilities Commission has been able to hold rates relatively flat with an average increase of only about 1% over the past six years. The 2021 budget reflects no rate increases. However, keep in mind due to the CIP projects that are, are coming, rates will need to be adjusted here in the future. Revenue for 2021, again, the budget reflects a 0% increase for both commercial and residential water sales. The New Prague Utilities has been, was able to keep that flat here going into 2021 due to not having to bond here in 2020 for that Main Street project. We were, we paid, just were able to pay cash for the small portion that was done this year. Wages are the same as the other departments, the 2.5 or 2.75 adjustment on the COLA and then 2% for the insurance increase. Slight project increases for in regards to operation and maintenance in 2021 over 2020, mainly due to higher distribution and maintenance costs. Key factors for 2021, Main Street reconstruction will consume most of the water department's time and resources. There'll be a need to increase staffing to help with all of the CIP projects and the maintenance of the distribution system. I had originally budgeted for this position to be added in 2020, but due to the scaled back Main Street construction and COVID concerns in regards to revenues. And so I delayed that here until 2021. So you'll see in the actual budgets that, so therefore there wasn't much of an increase in labor, even though we will be adding a staff member here in the first part of 2021. Land acquisition and planning for a building addition with the electric department to allow for a central location for services, for service trucks and equipment. That's in the planning stages. And then long and short term planning for several reconstruction projects that are planned for Main Street and then the Northwest Sector of New Prague. These will have major budget impacts over the next four years. Key developments for that happened in 2020. We replaced a section of Water Main along 12th Street Northeast that went from Columbus up to Glenn's shop there. We were able to pay cash for that project that I think it came in at about 125,000 in the original bid, but with a few adders in there, I think we landed at about 100 and just under $140,000. And we were able to pay for that out of cash reserves. We installed fiber optic connections to our 10th Avenue booster and made final connections to our filter plant number three. Staff spent a considerable amount of time working with property owners and consulting engineers for the planning of the reconstruction of the Main Street project through 2021. And then staff replaced all of the piping in preparation for what'll happen here in the street in 2021, coming from filter plant number one, which is located here by the power plant. So we already have all of that piping done and waiting for it to, for the new piping to go by our main street.
Does that pay by cash also, Bruce?
No, that would be part of, oh, the, the project by the, by the plant here, yes, Chuck, that was paid for by cash.
Thank you.
I'll just touch on some of the key, key budget items as we go through them. I won't go line by line like we do with the commission. They, we went through this really with a fine tooth comb with them. But nonetheless, in regards to revenue, as you can see here, we're staying, staying pretty flat. About a $63,000 increase is what I'm kind of projecting here for, for next year. And that's just due to added water sales. Our expenditures really staying pretty much flat again. Power and pumping increased a little bit just due to, we figure that the increased sales, hopefully that continues going into 2021. Our distribution cost staying relatively flat, 61 this, this past year. We're thinking about 59,000 going into 21. Wages and benefits, again, like I was saying, we pretty much had that factored in already last year. And so the increase is only 25,000 and on the ANG side of things. Operating costs, one of the main things that kind of threw a little bit of a wrench into our operating cost is the state and the federal agencies are forcing us to do a risk and resilience study. So I'll have to hire some professional services, i.e. an engineer, to help put that program in place. The cost of doing that is about, we've gotten some bids or it's going to be right around $20,000. Don't have a choice in that. That's going to be a mandate by the, by the state and federal agencies to have those policies in place. And I'll probably come to the council for approval of that once we put those emergency action plans into place. More or less, it's all in all, those not much of a change in regards to the final totals, only $32,000 in difference. Revenue over expenditures in the water department, last year we had forecasted at 296. We're at 475 primarily due to increased water sales this summer. And then we had a little extra money in there due to figuring we would have hired another staff member and did not. So we have, we've been able to add a little bit to the reserves and then pay cash for some of our CIP projects. Forecast for 2021, we're looking at an inbound, a positive balance of 295,000. And so obviously staying really close to what it was a previous year and no rate increases. This chart just shows a little bit of, in regards to the revenue, you can kind of see how we're definitely a community of residential. Really could use some commercial water sales, but we don't have that in New Prague. And so we drive almost all of our revenue from residential water sales. On the expense side of things, typically where our major expense, obvious labor. It isn't like the electric department where you have a lot of cost in your wholesale product. Obviously the water coming out of the ground is free, but you have your purification and pumping and your distribution cost. And then we have quite a bit of depreciation on the water side too, just because we've been putting in a lot of plant. Here's kind of our projections in regards to water sales. As you can see, we peaked in 2007 at almost 300 million gallons. And this past year, we landed up at 224 million gallons. I had budgeted 205 million. So our sales, obviously we, we had some heat in June and July, early in the summer. And we had nice water, good water sales throughout the community. And you can, you can kind of see how that's been bouncing around. But I finally hit a budget, Chuck. I went over my budget, so I spare you from having to say that.
I'm, I'm proud of you.
Your last year, hey, so.
Yes. I can go on with the thing, if Bruce finally hit a budget.
Exactly. Nonetheless, this graph just kind of shows what our bonding is going to be going forward. You can see where our Main Street projects will have a pretty good effect on a 1.6 million of bonding approximately for the water department. And then obviously bonding projects again going through 2025, fairly significant bonding projects. I think we're going to only bond though for the first two, two years, 21 and 22 will bond. And then we'll, should be able to pay some cash for the rest of the projects that going forward. At least we're, we're projecting that. This kind of just shows our water rate history. As you can see, our rates have been really, really stable over the last five years, both on our base rates and in our, and our cost per thousand gallons. So doing very good and really do well in comparison to other cities. This chart kind of shows a little bit of what, on page nine here, of how we compare to some of our other cities around us, at least the ones that we were able to get the information from. As you can see, there's some cities that had to build new water filter plants and so that have some fairly significant water rates. And New Prague is hanging in there being right in the middle or maybe even quite a bit and lower than some. So doing good that way. This chart just shows a little bit of what we anticipate for some of our CIP costs going forward. Water department is a little more predictable than the electric in regards to we know what some of our CIP projects are going to be as far as reconstruction. As you can see in that area there, that kind of shows what we're planning for our reconstruction forecast. Those are in those year dollars, so not in, not in 2021 dollars, but in, but we figured those projects will cost in those given years. So there has been some inflators put in there for that. I put in a little placeholder here yet for the, for our either land acquisition and/or a building addition to accommodate some space for the water department, whether that's in 21 or 22, that, that'll be determined here and what we decide to do. Still have some normal upgrades that we'll do. Our skate upgrade is kind of continue. Expensive when you replace electronics and skater control for our pumping and water monitoring and that type of thing. Service trucks and meter replacement for the Main Street project. We're going to put all new meters in when we replace those services into those commercial establishments. This is kind of the telltale, kind of shows how cash flows are going. And up here on, in the top, it just kind of show, it kind of shows what we're predicting we'll have for possible rate increases going into the future. I mean, my goal, and I think the goal of the commission is always to stay below 3%. And you know, one or two percent are, are great if you can keep them in those ranges. We talked a little bit about, you know, should you, should you really have a 0% increase? We talked a little bit about, you know, should you should you really have a zero percent increase when you know the cost of everything goes up, but. I felt that we had enough in reserves and so going into this coming year and with some people struggling with the COVID issues and so. Think we'll be okay keeping things flat and then just knowing that in the future, we're probably going to have some slight rate increases, but nothing, nothing I'm crazy. That at least that we can foresee. And then down on the bottom here, it just kind of shows our proceeds from from bonds. You see the one point six million for twenty twenty one and one point three million for twenty twenty two. Keeps our ending cash very stable going forward. Um, I think that's what our bonding people and so like to look at just to make sure that we keep our cash reserves and our ending cash in check. And um, and then last but not least here on the bottom, it kind of shows our cash over. Over or under our minimum, as you can see, we're over of our minimums, so that's our based on three months of bond payment and. Our operating cash. Can see what it takes there to keep the the water utility functioning and then what we have in reserve over that, so. It's nice to have a little bit of a reserve just in case you have wells fail or filter plants go bad and that kind of thing does does happen once in a while. That's all I had for the water budget. I think if you guys have any questions on the water budget, I'll take those now and then we can. Go on to the electric budget.
Anyone have any questions for Bruce? Okay, if not, let's go on to the elector.
Electric, we start out with a cover picture. That's the new charging station for electric vehicles that's located over by Coburn's. I don't know if any of you saw it or not, or. Maybe you cussed it because it was taking up a parking spot. I don't know. But nonetheless, it's a us and eighteen other communities partnered together to buy this equipment. The the equipment was actually purchased by our power supplier. And then we were responsible for providing the utilities to it and the revenue from people charging there will be will come back to the utility, so.
Is anybody using that, Bruce?
Um, it's actually not functioning yet, Rick. It's going to be commissioned here within about the next month here, so.
And we have no vehicles that'll work, right?
The utility does not currently have a electric vehicle. No, it's mainly to make New Prague a destination destination city for. People that have electric cars, so they're that don't have range anxiety for coming to New Prague and not being able to charge. So they'll have this station here and then there's going to be two of them also by City Hall parking lot there. They won't be the fast chargers like this one, but will allow people to charge too. Well, quickly just touch on some of these highlights here. Obviously, the. Overall management goal, the new Craig utilities left department is to provide the safe and reliable and economically. Public electric service with focus on our customers' needs and infrastructure enhancements, growth and responsibility to the resource management. Twenty twenty was a very busy year, starting out with our mainline distribution extensions to the Jeff Belzer Ford and Chevy dealerships and then the quick trip development. That was more than just a service to quick trip, you know, that was a kind of a development in itself and then quick trip was responsible for. All of those utilities more or less in that in that corner there, so. Cruise installed, it's actually, I think we're over, we're at round forty two now, new house services. And then two large commercial services to the chart pumping station and then we're in the process of installing it to the Hy-Vee. Generation and distribution departments replaced all of the power plant underground cooling tower piping. That was one of those pictures that Mike was showing you. And installed the piping to accommodate the electrical and water main replacement during twenty twenty one. An M P U C staff also installed about one point five miles of fiber optic cable this past summer. That'll connect the golf maintenance building and then our tenth avenue booster, so we'll be out all the way out to the. South side of of town. I asked him today how many miles of fiber we have now and he said we're just under ten miles of fiber optic cable. That feed the city buildings throughout New Prague. Total C I P for the development and the projects and equipment costs was was approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Forecast for twenty one, uh, electric department budget. Was to forecast the financial operation of the new trade utilities commission. I think the key takeaway from this is our wholesale power supplier, which is Simpa, will be holding the rates for twenty one at the twenty twenty level. So no rate increases for the on the wholesale side of things and. That's a that directly reflects to what we're able to do on the retail side and so. Our twenty twenty one revenue budget reflects a zero percent increase for the base and energy rates. I do have a couple slight adjustments to our residential off-peak rate. And to our commercial demand rate and that's just part of our twenty nineteen cost of service study. And just to keep those rates in in alignment with our other rates so that we don't have any one class. I think I have fourteen classes and so that I don't have any one class paying more than their fair share or what it costs to provide that service. Um, again, on our, the rates reflect the two point five percent wage adjustment and the two percent in regards to the insurance. Uh, I will also have a lineman replacement or retirement. Starting year in twenty twenty one. And then we also made a little bit of an allowance in the in the in our A and G for wage adjustments for. Our weight study that we'll probably talk a little bit about later, but I need to get need to make some adjustments there. Our purchase power is down due primarily to the our large industrial sales. Obviously, we lost Miller milling. That was about ten million K W H a year. And so those that reflects into our purchase power being down. And then our capital improvement costs are a little bit lower in twenty than twenty twenty, but. Still fairly aggressive due to our distribution facilities associated with the Main Street. And our service territory expansion upgrades, we we probably have a little bit higher standards than what Minnesota Valley is in regards to redundancy and loop feeds. And we've been working the last couple of years here to bring those up to our standards. Some of the key budget and operational challenges in twenty one. Obviously, we need to address some space needs for equipment and inventory storage. This needs to be a priority in twenty twenty one. The Utilities Commission has hired a consultant to help with this challenge. And it's our hope that we'll be able to come up with some solutions in twenty one for a combined facility with the water and electric departments. Replacement of power plant distribution feeders that cross Main Street. We have four main feeders that feed to the to the north and. East out of the power plant here that are affected by the Main Street reconstruction, so those will be number one. As soon as frost is out this spring to start on those projects. Distribution upgrades to bring service territory distribution. I've talked about that a little bit. And then we we have a goal of getting all of our residential distribution lines underground. And I think we're about three quarters of the way to doing that. We also need to address current and future workforce and career development needs so that. The utility can retain skilled labor force and be prepared for future workforce retirements. That's probably one of my key agendas going into twenty twenty one to make sure that. We're ready to to tackle those those. Those challenges there. And then we've got purchase of a fairly expensive piece of equipment, a new digger dairy truck. For twenty twenty one and those run around three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Key accomplishments. Um, obviously, we completed the service territory annexation of Jeff Belzer dealerships. We lagged behind that a little bit. The water and sewer went into there in twenty nineteen. And then due to the cost of building out to there with our electric, we put that off until this year, so. But that has been completed and those those two establishments are now our New Prague Utility Power. And they're good loads, so um, we purchased directional boring machine at a cost of nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that unit has saved about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar in contractor cost in the first year of its use alone, so. I kind of I commended the commission and kind of holding true to our our C I P expenditures in. In twenty twenty, it was, you know, that was a tough decision based on losing our largest customer, but. We decided to go for forward with that and that that is really paid some nice dividends. Again, new residential and commercial customers, forty new residential customers, forty two now. We installed about twenty twenty five thousand feet of underground high voltage distribution lines and eighty six hundred feet of fiber optic cable. We finished nearly four years of planning for the reconstruction of Main Street. The utility will be removing all of the old street lighting and working with the contractors and replacing all of the lighting throughout the project. The utility will also be installing new high voltage distribution feeder crossing by the power plant. Again, we installed the D C fast charger and we replaced all of the utilities I I T system in conjunction with the city. And that's been a really nice enhancement over what we had. I'll jump through the budget to the budget here a little bit. I'll just touch on a few of the the highlights. Mislanous income, we, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment from our power supplier for this coming year. What had happened there is the the cash reserves that we keep in for a rate stabilization account had gotten out of the bandwidth. And so those are paid back to the members, so our our part of that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I was able to that chuckle be coming here in January and I was able to put that towards. Keeping our rates stable going into twenty twenty one. Um, again, in the middle here, the large industrial, obviously, that's will be no more. That was what Miller milling was. Their their revenue, obviously, that's offset by purchase power, but it was about one point two million dollars worth of. Of electric costs that was was there for them. Had some nice increases though, um, projected here for the hundred and thirty five. That's for the new Hy-Vee store. Grocery stores are great loads. Um, and we're partnering with them and regards to a standby generator that we'll be using for peak shaving in the summertime, so. That's that's a great asset to have. And then small industrial stuff in regards to the Belzers and Quick Trips, that's about the revenue coming from them. Again, that's an offset by some wholesale power cost. All in all, you can see it about a six hundred and thirty one thousand dollar change from twenty twenty, but. Still relatively stable. I'm kind of forecasting depending weather dependent, of course, that's always what's kind of throws a wrench in things, but. Twenty twenty one, I'll see load growth of about three point three million K W H. So that's significant load growth for our community our size. It's kind of nice to have that to bounce back from after losing the mill. Um, our source of supply or our costs or expenditures, again, our purchase power is our biggest cost at about five point two million. That's down about seven hundred and twenty thousand just due to our industrial load dropping off a little bit. And again, that's reflected in our totals, so Miller milling being down a little bit or not being there at all, excuse me. Let me back up here. Um, Simpa, that's our mainly our generation and our natural gas cost for our generation again. That is a an in and out, but again, that doesn't vary, hasn't varied very much. And mainly just less projects that we're doing as long in regards to upgrades or engine rebuilds. Um, in the coming year, so about fifty eight thousand dollars less than the previous year, but like I said, that's a hundred percent in and out. They they cover all of that expense for us. Um, our distribution costs relatively flat, staying about the same. Most of our distribution costs go into our C I Ps so that we can depreciate them out. So you don't see, I I don't have a lot of changes in there typically, even when we have big project costs, we go, we put that all into project base on cost. Our A and G in regards to our wages and expense, you might ask why we have five hundred and twenty two thousand year to date versus what I budgeted a five or eight ninety three. That's primarily due to we allocate a lot of our wages to our project cost so that we can depreciate them out, so for instance. Our Quick Trip project, our Belzer's project, the the labor that goes to that. Is in this total here, but I'm not showing up in our year to date. It shows up in in our in our other spreadsheets as we work that through. All in all, though, our labor costs haven't changed a whole lot. I'll have a little bit of alignment overlap, probably six months or so. Hopefully, I can get a higher in here. And then, so that'll add a little bit of cost and we added some in there for some wage increases. Our operating expense, again, very, very level compared to other years. Not much of a difference, only about it's a little bit less, but only by about three thousand dollars. Um, all in, so you can see our our budget. For twenty twenty, we were at six hundred and seventy two thousand is what I forecasted. It looks like we're going to land up at about one point six, so almost a million dollars worth of. Extra revenue going into uh. The end here of twenty twenty, um, that'll be offset by, we had a cast contribution from Simp of a hundred and eighty thousand. We've got about six hundred K of C I P. And then we had just a really good summer in regards to, we had some heat early on and we sold a lot of electricity, so. So it's hard to forecast exactly how that's going to turn out, but all in all, we had a good year. And we'll be able to put some into the reserve account here for future projects. For this year, I project that we'll land up about the same as last year. Even though we we do have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from Simba, so. A little bit less, I guess, if you would not figure that in there, but still all in all, doing really good. This just shows a little bit of how our revenue is broke out. You can kind of say it's a little different than the water side of things, about thirty nine percent. Pretty even split, actually, thirty nine percent from our residential base. That's grown considerably over the last couple of years when we added almost nine hundred customers. Twenty nineteen from our Minnesota Valley Service Territory takeover and our commercial is at about forty seven percent of our revenue. Our expenses just kind of breaks that out. Obviously, unlike the water, we have a lot of purchase power cost, so our purchase power cost is at about five point two million. And our labor cost is only at seventeen percent, so doing really good there, keeping our labor cost in check. And just being able to purchase power and sell it to our our customers. This kind of breaks down how I work from year to year in regards to what I figure we're going to have to buy for electricity. I'm estimating I'm going to have to buy about sixty seven million K W H. And at a cost of about point zero seven seven five. You see our cost per K W H is a little bit lower than the previous year, even though we did not have a rate decrease. That's primarily driven about, we were able to keep our demand cost down a little bit this past summer. That's kind of thanks to my operators here and using our low control programs to monitor that. And so we're able to keep those costs down so that we're not ratcheted or paying for electricity that we don't don't actually consume. We're held to about seventy five percent of that threshold throughout the whole year, so. Those demand costs really add up fast if they get out of hand in a real hot summer. Anyhow, you can see that cost is staying pretty stable over the years here and I forecast it to be just a little bit less going into twenty twenty one. This just kind of shows our rates, our this top part here, this this would be our residential rate. Our base rates and our cost per K W H would be staying the same in twenty twenty one and have been really stable in the past five years. And then this is our off-peak rate for the customers that want to participate in our off-peak program. And I work on some really thin margins here, so I need to make sure I keep those in check every year and so those are going to fluctuate probably every year. Because we're we're selling electricity here for almost half of what it costs normally, so there's a very thin margin there. And in our off-peak, and so I need to make sure that that's monitored really close. No changes in our commercial rates, as you can see there, and it's been very stable over the years. We had a little bit of adjustment here. But the last three years, four years been very stable. Here's our our base rate information. We took a little bit of an increase, even though it wasn't much and it looks worse on the graph than it actually was, but um. In our in our base base rate in regards to the different categories here. This just shows our demand rate and this is for our commercial customers. They actually have two rates. They pay for the energy that they consume and they pay for the. Amount of energy that they consume at any one time. That's what we call our demand. I need to, and you'll see a little bit when we see the comparisons going forward here, but I need to adjust that a little bit. And this was planned all along that this rate was low and we need to work it up and we decided to do it over a over a three year period here, so I. I think we're going to be pretty stable in regards to this going forward. But we'll know a little bit more how this did once I get to the end of twenty twenty one. OPU or Oatana Utilities does a nice comparison of what our costs are, how we compare to other communities. As you can see here, we land up right in the middle. That's kind of what I as a manager always want to see. I want to make sure my rates are where they need to be, not too high, yet not too low. And we land exactly in the middle, seven out of the 14. Might ask kind of, you know, like Sean, you were a Minnesota Valley customer. How, how does that compare? Well, they don't, they don't publish their rates, so I have a hard time extrapolating that, but I'm a Minnesota Valley customer and they would land about right in here about with St. Peter, their cost and Excel. They, they have what they call a power job cost adjustment, so they can change, they change their rate a little bit every month. And especially in the summertime, they get about as high as 12.5 cents and we're at that 11.6. So it's hard for me to factor them in here in regards to putting them in the graph. This just shows our commercial class. Again, we land up right in the middle, where we want to be. We've, we've had good sales in our commercial and we've been able to hold our rates on very stable here. Our industrial class, which is kind of falls into even your schools fall in our industrial class, so our schools, anything over 250 KW of demand. So your schools, your charge, Bush Brothers, Scott equipment, all those customers, that's where they land. And you can see our rates are very, very good here. We're four out of the 14. And part of the reason I've been making those adjustments in our demand here is so that we need to get that up so they're paying their fair share a little bit. It was being supplemented a little bit by our residential rate and our end goal here is to make sure everybody's paying their own share. And so that'll level, that'll level out here going forward with our rate change a little bit here. Um, this just breaks out our CIP a little bit in regards to what we have planned for expenditures. Again, my distribution system here, we've got fairly, fairly aggressive here going into 2021 with our Main Street construction and just our other distribution upgrades. It's pretty much all tied into this northeast sector and our replacement of Main Street here. We've got some equipment replacement at, at 310,000 and then I did put a placeholder in here for a building addition. We've got 1.2 million scheduled in there for that, whether that happens this year or not. Doesn't factor in so much like the water department, you know, where we have bond payments or we have debt service, we would pay a portion of this probably out of some reserves and then would bond for some of it also. So that's kind of to be seen and obviously the council would be part of anything that would happen on that front. The rest of it is just mainly miscellaneous equipment and then some service truck replacements. So about 1.9 million should we do a building expansion. But again, that could fluctuate from a year or two here. I always kind of tell the commission that really can't forecast or not forecast accurately much past four to five years on the electric side, just due to weather influences so much on our revenue side and the major cost of things with they, if they go bad, you know, if you have a substation go down or that type of thing, a million dollars don't go very far. So those can change in a hurry when you have those types of fluctuations. Obviously if you have continued growth, you could have substation replacements or additions or power plant additions going out into those further years, but it's hard for me to forecast exactly what those are going to be, but we, we put some placeholders in there just for our distribution cost and then work through what we kind of know our, our equipment replacement costs are going to be. That pretty much does it for the electric budget. I know I didn't, I got to take a little more time than what Mike had, but I'll, I'll stand for any questions that the council may have.
Bruce, do we still have that open slot in the power plant?
I do. I have one open slot yet for a future engine, whether it would be there or whether it'd be offsite location. I think that's something that'll probably come up here in the next couple of years. There, there's a, a need for a little more capacity on the Simp system. And so they'll, they'll maybe be looking to us to put in one more engine and that would be good for new preg too, because we can currently carry our, our system load. And it would be nice to have that, that capability going forward into the future with a little bit of excess.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks Bruce, it was well presented.
Yeah, anyone else have any questions for Bruce on either the water or the electric?
Bruce, that Simp pays for that new engine, right? A hundred percent or?
Well, Sean, there's a couple of different ways of doing it. One is new preg to make the investment and then we're credited back by Simp for doing so. And then another way is, is it's kind of like we, we are running now and that's a, it's a life of unit contract. So they'll, they'll put in those engines and main, and do the maintenance on them. And then we're just paid for all of the expense and the full-time employees. So currently I have four employees that are fully paid by Simp for running this power plant and I can use them for anything else out on the system as long as I keep this power plant functional and staff and operational. So there's different ways of, that we're able to do that going forward, Sean.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Bruce? All right, Bruce, thank you very much. It was a well-presented two budgets. Okay, next on the agenda, I think Ken, you're going to take this.
Yep. So I have a request from our November 10th park board meeting. We had a request actually from, excuse me, the Teets family specifically for the wooded area in Foundry Hill Park. And you can kind of see that on the overhead here. It's right by the West Water Tower and it's about a five acre, give or take wooded area. Historically, and it was never really formally named, but it's been historically going by the name of the Teets or excuse me, the Foundry Hill Park Woods Nature and Exploration Area. It was an area that kids had been using for making little stick huts and we had a Cub Scout project do a wooden trail through there. And then the final piece that was Kay Wilcox actually donated a sign and I'll show you that in a minute, that kind of gave it its pseudo name a number of years ago, but it's never really formally had a name. And if you remember a few years ago, we actually amended due to what we believed was going to be this pending request, we amended our policy to consider naming parks and even geographical features in parks after local names. Prior to that policy change, we did not consider that, but this specific request is actually being renamed in accordance with our policy under being a geographical feature, not an actual full portion of the park, obviously. This is an area within Foundry Hill Park that would not change. Just the geographical woods area is what the request to rename is for in front of you here tonight. So the park board is responsible advisory board for recommending these namings and renaming of parks per the policy that was adopted by the council. So they reviewed again back on November 10th and they felt it was appropriate to rename this geographical feature based on the community services provided to the community from Dan and Sharon Teets over the years. You can find their information in the packet as well as the historical family tied to that land. For those of you that maybe aren't aware, the adjacent development is actually the Sharn Dan development, which is Sharon and Dan is where the name derived from, but they were not necessarily the direct developers of that, but their historical tie was put into the name of the development. And then this woods was part of their, their farmland. And up until recently, they had resided actually in the neighborhood adjacent to the park. Another family member lives on the old farmstead. So there still is a historical tie there. The park board did recommend renaming this geographical feature for the Teets family and the requested name was actually the Teets Trail Woods Nature Exploration Area. That was kind of a mouthful and the park board's recommendation is to simplify it to the Teets Nature Exploration Area. And really what that would mean is we would just update our sign here and this is a sign that's located out in front of the entrance to that woods area. And it's just changing and removing the Foundry Hill Park Woods line of text to Teets, welcome to the Teets and then the nature exploration area. So very minimal change, but it's about $150 to have the signed company update that for us and kind of do a general cleanup. There's some nicks and scratches from kids hitting sticks on the sign from over the years. So $150, I clean it up and get it looking like new again. So the park board did recommend on a five to zero vote to forward to the council tonight for consideration of the renaming of this geographical area. So with that, I can stand for any questions you might have on this request.
Yeah, Ken, I got one for you. Why was it named Foundry Hill Park in the first place?
There was historically a foundry that was located in the neighborhood. Actually, I think there might've been a couple of foundries in the neighborhood of, of this park and kind of that west side of town over there. That's really the, the history of that name.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? If not, I guess I'll vote for a motion to rename the geographical feature in Foundry Hill Park?
So moved.
And a motion by Sean Ryan?
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. Is there any other questions or comments at this time? If not, we'll take a vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes five zero. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next on the agenda is a three-year lease on the copier. Mike, are you taking this or Patty or who?
Yeah, I'll take it that, as you can see from my memo, that we're coming to the end here, the end of December with our current five-year lease with Metro Sales on four of the copy machines that we have, two on the utility side, accounting side of the operation, one in PD and one over in planning, building, inspection and admin. And the proposal by extending the lease another three years is that we would see our monthly payment drop from about $961 down, down to about 591 or a savings of a little over $4,400 over the next three years. They would look at starting the rate here already beginning in December. So we'd save on this month's payment with the benefit of the reduction. However, as we're obviously dealing with older machines, slight increases in the maintenance costs with the black and white copies and the color copies. And so if we estimate, attempt to estimate out based on current usage under those rates, we'd see that savings over that time period drop down to about $2,500. I think we've got some more intense work to do to eliminate some of the color copying that'll save us additional dollars in that process, but basically all we're simply looking for is to extend the three-year lease with Metro Sales as well as re-upping the lease agreement with US Bank for three years. And attached with theirs is the, the requirement under that to have what they call or term, when you look at the second document on D1, it's called a state and local government addendum. And what it is, is it's a non-appropriation is that for any reason, if the council saw fit that financially, we didn't think we could pay for them, we have the right to non-appropriate and basically get out of our lease under certain circumstances. Not anything that I guess I would anticipate us doing. We've had good luck with all four of these machines. We've had good service out of Metro Sales and so we don't see any reason to switch at this time.
Okay, any questions for Mike regarding the extension of the lease?
The, the action, if you do, would be kind of a two-part is to approve the documents A and B with US Bank and then documents C and D with Metro Sales and they were all reviewed with the city attorney before tonight.
So you want to do it in two actions? You want me to approve, move to approve one and then move to approve the other or?
I think you could probably do it all in one, that to, and I'm just referring to them as items A and B. When we do the minutes, we'll list out what they are, but up above the recommendation is to approve documents A and B with USB, with US Bank and then documents C and D with Metro Sales.
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler and I will second that. So any other further questions or comments? If not, we will take a vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so those pass five zero. Good. Next. I can't read this on my agenda. I don't know what it means.
What kind of action you want Glenn?
Recommendation is informational. I guess that doesn't mean we have to accept it, right?
Move to deny.
Okay, Mike, are, you're going to take this, I assume?
Yeah, what I was just going to briefly talk about is that this could have a, a multi-employee impact depending upon ultimately who applies and how we go through the process. But what I wanted to just kind of outline for you is that it would be my hope to begin and the hope is in this one is that we have an internal candidate that we can deal with on a internal promotion, but I would still post the position and take applications or information resumes from any of the candidates that we would have, that would submit information. We'd take a look at that and determine whether they met the minimum requirements for the job and, you know, look at the qualifications, the abilities, experience and our needs. And if we can handle that through a promotion, we, we would do so. And depending on the timing, it's my hope that potentially coming out of tonight, that as I've kind of outlined, a schedule that I'm, I've been playing with for part of the day-to-day is, you know, we could very well, depending on how this process goes, we could have a recommendation back to you on the 21st meeting to, to fill this vacancy, assuming we get the right candidate out of the various city departments that we anticipate that we could, that we could be in a position to likely recommend on the 21st, a replacement for Glenn. If that does happen, and I guess there's the possibility that it might not happen, but assuming positively that, that that could happen, then we'd have to begin taking a look at backfilling the vacancy created by that internal promotion and would have to again go through and take a look at, I think, the filling of that position, which would be a, a, a position within the public works area as well, likely could, could come forth from within the department or one of our other departments. And that all could be handled in a promotion, but I wouldn't expect that to be done until probably after the first of the year, because we need to get the public works director filled. Then that would need to be involved in backfilling with a position if that does come internally. And so as part of this, I'm trying to be very careful and not over speculate, but if it does happen, then we've got to deal with the other one and to try to get that filled in early to mid-January. And if that does happen, then likely we're looking at backfilling another position behind that. position behind that. And in most cases, we'd probably advertise that on the open market to, to fill that position. So I've got all the job descriptions pulled. Uh, I've got tentative timelines. Uh, I haven't shared that with Patty. I kind of spent the day since I was at home working today, spent time working through that and would want to meet with her and see if the timing works and she agrees with it. Then we kind of put that together so that we can handle it. Hopefully two of the three would be internal promotions and then the third one at the end would be outside advertising for a position.
Okay.
The goal is to try to get as much of it done as we can before Glenn actually leaves on February 25th. I still want to make sure that he's got things to do on his plate and, you know, he can certainly be a great asset in helping us, but we also have to look at that if we fill his position, that that new individual is going to want to have a say in the process. But I think we still got value in Glenn's participation in the process as well. And I think that would be well received. And so intent is, is to try to keep him busy here going all the way up to the end anyway.
Okay. Any questions from the council to Mike regarding, this was for information only to?
With any of those positions, the, the recommendations would all come to the council for you to take final action on as far as the appointment of individuals and salary and everything that goes with that position. That would obviously come to the council for approval.
Okay. Okay, I guess no one has any questions or comments on Glenn's retirement? I mean, I think we've, we've made a lot of comments early about Glenn's retirement, but go ahead, Bruce. You had something to say?
No, I just thank Glenn for his work, but thank you very much for giving us such a good notice period. That's, appreciate that. Your concern and your conscientiousness to try to achieve a smooth transition. So I appreciate you doing that.
You're welcome.
I'll second that too, Glenn. Thanks for all your service.
Thank you.
There's going to be a party, isn't there?
As soon as they figure out a way to control this virus, there will be.
We can wait, you know.
Next fall, is that what you're saying?
You know, nobody has said it, but, uh, and, and I will because it, it, it is a, a very high level of dedication to somebody doing a job. And we talk about Glenn doing this for 40-plus years, that when you take a look at that, two-thirds of his life has been spent working for the city of New Prague. And, you know, I find that, you know, fairly phenomenal that in my capacity as a city administrator, city manager, that I've led what is kind of the vagabond life of being a city manager, having moved around to three states and five cities and that. And, you know, I look at somebody like Glenn who has been here for 40-plus years. And that being two-thirds of his life, that, that's a huge commitment for what that's meant. And, you know, I don't know if I know exactly. And Glenn, maybe you could, you know, just give a brief highlight is that you started out in the water department. And as I recall, was it a meter reader?
I was a meter reader for the electric and water department. Then moved into the water department, but still read meters. And became supervisor of the water department and still read meters part of the time, but that's when we added an employee to the water department. Then in 99, I took over up at the street garage and still ran the water department along with the public works. And then in 2013, became public works director. And that's when the water department stayed with Bruce at the utilities. And I inherited the wastewater plant as part of my responsibilities along with public works and government buildings and all of those things. So a lot of nights taking calls in the middle of the night and dealing with issues of through storms and floods and everything else. So yeah, it's, uh, looking forward to doing what I want to do and going where I want to go. And if I don't want to go, I'm not going to go.
You know, if we could store the information that you have in your brain on the computer, that would be great.
Uh, that's mostly gone. I'm 60 years old, so most of it's.
I was just sitting here thinking, where was I in 1999? And holy moly, you've been doing this a lot on one job site. I got no more than three years of one job site and now it's gone.
I opened a lot of different doors, but it was all for the same, all of the same city, but moved in a lot of different buildings and areas. And so I can't even say I opened the same door for 40 years. It's been a lot of different doors, but.
Yeah, nice job, Glenn.
Yep.
Quite a career. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity. I, I sent it at a staff meeting of all the help that I've received from, from my fellow employees and, and management and, and, and the councils. Naturally, I haven't dealt with all the councils for that many years, but it's always, it's always either utility commission or the council. It's somehow always kind of reflects back down onto you. And so there was a lot of good years and some years I weren't always that happy, but that's just the way it goes. Can't be happy all the time.
Well, you will.
Now you can't.
Glenn, if you could characterize it in taking a look at the community and how it's grown over those 40 years, how would you describe what it was like when you first started versus what it is now?
Well, when I first started as a meter reader, every meter was inside the house. Everybody that lived in the community, there was somebody home. So you didn't have two income families back in 1980 and for a number of years. I believe that when I started in 1980, the population was just a little over 3,000 people. And we're at almost 7,900 now. Ken, correct me, but I think that's about where we're at. So.
Higher.
Meter reading was a black book. On one side of each page was the electric and, and then the other side was the water. You'd write down the reading and then subtract it and move on to the next house. Actually, most of the time, the shortest path from one house to the next was through the backyard and of the winters or there was two feet of snow or more, you'd be pretty tired by the end of the day, although I was 20 years old, so I could do that. Uh, the worst part back in those days when you're reading meters is you pretty much knew everybody that lived there. Um, so you'd knock on the door, then either let you in or you, you know, you went in back in those days, nobody really questioned that you were coming in to read the meter. And then they want to talk for a little bit and you were all dressed up for Five Below. And by the time you walked out of that house, you were sweating and then you froze the rest of the day because you got all sweated up. So, um, that was, that was, I actually was just telling my kids that just a couple of weeks ago, that meter reading that it, it actually was a good job. Even though back in the day, it seemed like it was a hard, hard job, but it was a good job because you knew everybody and, and people were happy and they were actually, a lot of the older people were happy to see you. It gave you, gave them somebody to talk to, even if it was just for two or three minutes. So, but yeah, I mean, the city's grown. There's no question about it. I remember going down Columbus Avenue South to read meters. A bunch of new houses built off of H Street and on a dry summer, you could walk across the swamp, the kids, those five or six houses. But on a wet summer, you had to drive around there to get to those five or six houses. And you know, that's the difference from what you see today compared to what it was back then. It was just, it was a different time. I mean, when I started here or even got on the water department working on water main breaks, we had no pagers, we had no cell phones, we had no nothing. When a water main broke, then they would look for you. And if they found you, then you'd go in and fix it. And if they didn't find you, they waited till the next morning to fix it. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't an emergency. Uh, where compared today, uh, everything's an emergency. Even if it's not, it's an emergency. So I think those are sometimes the trials that I had in current times is why did that change to be an emergency today where it really isn't an emergency? So I think that, that's probably the biggest change I see. And I blame it on electronics. I think electronics has made people impatient. People can sometimes be pretty demanding, but besides that, I, I think that's the biggest change I've seen in 40 years is it, it went, it's a lot faster paced. Not saying that's a bad thing, but there's a lot of things that we see on a day-to-day basis that we're, we're really kind of questioning, how did this become an emergency today where it really isn't an emergency? Yes, there is some things that are. There's no question about it. But there's some things that aren't. So I think that's the biggest change that I've, that I've seen in 40 years is, is just how things have gotten to be so fast-paced. And nobody's got time to wait.
So Glenn, what you're saying is Bruce is the fault of this because of the electricity?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, Chuck, I just read your meter, so.
Add another zero on it.
The other question I have is Patty, could you read Glenn's writing?
I could.
Okay.
When I first started, I was the only girl at the utility and Glenn helped out in the office every once in a while. And, um, you know, we actually, it, it's, it's no lie. We probably knew almost everybody that came in that door to pay. And everybody was just so awesome and wanted to, you know, chat a little bit. And so, yeah, I agree with him. Things have really changed. You know, now I get names that come across my desk and I look at them and I'm thinking, that's not a name. Where the heck did that come from?
One of the big things that Glenn has been an advocate with along with Bruce is that we've been able to, uh, put down on, on mapping that we haven't lost all of his knowledge that, uh, with mapping now for water, um, Bruce, I think you've got electric, we've got storm sewer, we've got sanitary sewer, that we've got all of that infrastructure data that used to be just on hard copy maps has now been GPSed. And so we can send staff to a piece of property and with an iPad and they're able to pull up information on that site and can look at the different layers of information, whether it be addressing a sanitary issue or a, a storm issue or a water issue. And, you know, they know what direction that, uh, the storm sewer flows or the sanitary sewer runs or the size of the piping so that they can help that customer. So that information that we have available at our fingertips in trying to handle individual property owner or individual customer service complaints, uh, has substantially changed as Glenn is describing from when he first started to where we're at today, that the wealth of data and the information that we can pull up and use is, is so much more today.
Yeah, that whole, that whole program of being electric, water, sanitary, storm was not a cheap venture, but it's, it's such a valuable tool. It will continue to be a valuable tool. Bruce, you remember the days back in the eighties when they had nothing. It wasn't even a hand-drawn map. Everybody was going to remember where that electric line went or that water line went. In fact, you used to be told, what are you drawing a map for? You'll remember that. No way. So there were a lot of years that we had, we had nothing. So that was, that was a, that was an expensive venture. It was, it was a lot of time spent by staff, but it's going to be a, a tool that's going to be used forever. And it's going to be just invaluable.
Okay. Well, again, I'm sure we'll have a party with you, Glenn, when the pandemic's over and we will hoist one in your honor.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, Jim, you want to kind of give us an update on the COVID-19?
Uh, update for our local area here would be, uh, the numbers just continued to rise. In the last four weeks, in Leesour County, went from 52 to 104, 142 and 155. That's the rate of increase. Um, with the schools, they talked about anything over 50 should be distance learning. So obviously those numbers just continued to rise. Um, with Scott, Scott is up to 190 and Rice County is 217 this week. So those numbers continue to rise. Um, I think last, last week or last October, the last month anyways, Leesour said it was their highest month throughout. Um, for November, the, uh, the numbers were three, three and a half times higher than that. They were over 700 cases. So it just continues to grow. Um, CDC did come out with the, the shorter quarantine to 10 days if you're doing some testing and no symptoms. Um, and today's, the governor just talked about wanting to accept that shorter quarantine time for those that it works for to get people back to work and keep staffing at levels that you need to. Although he, he prefaced it by saying, if the 14 days work for you, you should probably do that because it's safer. So beyond that, he didn't add anything to if he's going to continue on with his executive order in the form that it is right now. It would be a guess right now, but I would anticipate that he's going to do something at least through the holidays with an extension. And then, uh, early to mid-January, look at maybe opening it up, but, but that's only a guess right now because we'll see what happens with it. Uh, probably next week he'll make that address. Otherwise, I think in town, everybody's, uh, doing, uh, doing their part. Um, we did have the mini Santa Claus parade on Friday evening. Just went through kind of some local streets. A few people came out to watch that. Everybody was able to social distance, so it didn't really, I didn't have any concerns with that anyways. But I, I think people, people are at a point where they're just looking for things to do that they can take their mind off all of the garbage stuff that's out there.
Okay. And how's city staff doing? Are we?
Our numbers are good. Uh, right now, we don't have anybody out with any symptoms at all that I'm aware of. Uh, we'll talk tomorrow at our staff meeting, but, uh, yeah. Um, I know in the police department, we had, we had two that kind of cycled through, but otherwise our staffing is good. Uh, we are continuing our team concept. Um, and that'll go for another five weeks here. We're at it right now.
Sounds good. Anyone have any questions for Jim? Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions? On any items in the consent agenda? Pretty quiet, just some minutes and some payables? I just want to say I did see an invoice in there for the furniture for the office staff. And I don't know if, I was fortunate enough to take a tour before they closed City Hall. And I think, uh, you guys did a good job of picking out the furniture and the changes you made in, in the office area, I think have very well received. I hope, I hope everyone's happy with what, what you guys did and looks really good.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions or comments, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. If there's no questions or comments, we'll take a vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes 5-0. Viscillaneous, Jim, you have anything else?
I do not have anything.
Okay, Mike?
No.
Okay, Ken?
Yeah, real quickly, I got a photo I'm popping up here for you. The zip line in Memorial Park opened up today. And we actually had kids out there using it despite being cold. So we figured, hey, let's open it up and then it's ready to go for spring. So just wanted to let everybody know that. That's all I got.
Good. Sally wants to try it. I'm bringing her down there.
Okay. Bruce, you have anything?
I do not.
Yes, I want, I want to ask the other.
Bruce, Bruce. Bruce Reimers, I'm going to go through the department heads first, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Patrick, you good?
Yep.
Okay, Barb?
I'm good, thanks.
Glenn?
I got nothing.
I'm going to miss that. And Patty?
Nothing.
Okay, now Bruce, I'll give you the floor.
Well, first of all, I should mention that I, I got a, a thing on the utilities from Simpa. And I see that Bruce Reimers is wearing a suit and tie in the picture. And I wonder why he doesn't wear that commission meeting. But Bruce is now the vice president of the board for Simpa this year, I think, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Congratulations, Bruce.
The, the question I wanted to ask the council is, I had an interest in, I was asking Ken this question, if we could have a shared, with the council members or if I could get a shared drive. And in the shared drive, there may be things that are more resource, like financial statements or city policies or agenda packets or for other commissions and things where either I or if you had an interest that you go to and look up things or past council member packets and, and other things could be in that drive as well, organizational charts, things like that, things to be able to look back on. So I asked Ken about this and there may be something that can be done in this manner. But instead of, I was interested in knowing if any other council members would use something like this or would have any interest in this. So you would be able to access this drive and we'd have to figure out how to do this. But so my question is really to the other council members to see if you have an interest in something like this or if you would use it.
Well, I, I think it could have some value as long as we're not duplicating documents that are already available through the city website. Because that way, let's talk about an org chart, for example, you know, you have to update it in two different places. So, and, and the other thing that I've noticed in using shared drives in a business situation are naming standards so that people understand what that document is, maybe having a date on it. So I think there's, it's very useful, Bruce, but I think there has to be some management to it as well. So it just doesn't become a dumping ground.
Thank you. Sean or Rick?
I go in at work all the time. I think they're great. I can see myself using it.
Rick?
I don't have enough information to be able to give you an intelligent answer. A, a shared drive, I don't even know what it is.
Well, it would really give you access to information that you might want to use as a resource. So if you wanted to look at past city council packets that had information within that packet, you want to go back in time and look at financial statements in the past or city policies could be, is a housing location that you could find things if you wanted to look, look for them instead of asking Ken or Mike or someone to, to send you something. You might be able to store it there. So if you were a new council member, you'd be able to basically have your kind of orientating information there. It could be all sorts of things depending on what you want to have in it. But so you may not have any interest in looking at anything. So maybe you wouldn't have a use for it or you wouldn't use it, but.
Well, I go, I go through the, the comprehension book or the, what do you call the planning? What do you call that, Ken? Yeah, comprehensive plan. I go through that all the time. So if, if that information was online, that would be great. You know, I, I do the, I kind of agree with Maggie on that. We'd probably be duplicating what's on the city website. But it would be nice to be able to go back and look, you know, to say, well, when Sean first started, this is what the packet was. Is that what you're kind of saying is that we'd have a, we could go back and have a database in there?
Yeah, in my vision, it would not include comprehensive plans or city ordinances or things that are available already on the website. Those are things that are open to the public and, and we can go back and look at ordinances. But the ordinances, as a matter of my understanding, they're not necessarily up to date. So maybe you would have current ordinances, but really it's up to the council to decide what there would be in there that's of use to us. But for my purposes, I'm interested in knowing, maybe some of the city policies could be housed there so I can look at things, an organizational chart. When I'm wondering, well, what does this person do or what's that person's name? Some of those kind of informations that are unique to the city council members that no one else really wants to see or needs to see in the public.
And that's. We would be the only ones that would have access to it would be the council and the mayor?
Well, the council and the staff that's going to monitor, that help manage it.
So we'd have to add you another job. Basically, Ken would probably manage it or something like that. Is that what you're kind of saying?
Yeah, I, I guess that's what I would envision, that someone be able to put the document there. It's not a lot of work. It's, it's already on the system. It's basically creating another file to move it to. You know, Maggie and, and I've used here, been involved in shared drives, so it's not a big issue. It's not a lot of work.
Yeah, any background information is always good and helpful. So I guess I would say yes to it.
I think.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your input.
Just for my, my two cents, not that I would be involved in it. But I think the value would be is if there was a way that you could have a quick look up and say, I want to see actions or minutes on things for a specific topic. And it would be able to give you almost like a library. And, and this is how things have progressed on a, let's say, an ordinance or progressed on a certain policy or something like that. You know, where you could, you know, have links to things that happened in 2010, 2009 and, and that, that all related to the same topic. I, I could see some value in that. But.
What I envisioned that when he was describing, that's what I'm envisioning too, is that we could go back and be specific. What happened? Why did they call it Foundry Park? You know what I mean? All the links would be good too.
That, that smells more of a database, which is a, a much larger project where you're putting in a particular topic and you want it to filter and, and find information related to that topic. So the shared drive essentially is just a place to store documents. So it's, it's a packet, it's a, a financial spreadsheet, whatever the case may be. So that's why I'm suggesting, you know, we make sure that when a file is named, it's very clear what that, what is in that file. So we don't have to open it and go, oh, no, that's not what I'm looking for type of a situation. So, yeah, I, I think it can be very useful. You know, it's widely used in many industries. We, the council, would have access to it as well as, you know, certain city staff. So I think it's worth giving it a try. And if we don't seem to be utilizing it, then at least we had an opportunity to experiment with it.
So it sounds like a yes, Bruce.
All right. Thanks for your input. I'm going to chew, chew on this with Ken and see how much work and the feasibility of setting it up.
It's pretty straightforward, so easy to do.
Okay. Is that all you have, Bruce?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, you got anything?
Nope.
Rick?
Uh, no, but Barb, I'm probably going to need help logging in on the next meeting. Okay.
Okay. Maggie, do you have anything else?
I just wanted to say thank you to the council for allowing the renaming of the geographical, geographical feature in Founder Hill Park. I think it's going to be, be quite a bit to the Keats family that submitted their request.
Yeah. Good. I don't have anything except for congratulating Glenn again. I'm sure, you know, he's probably going to get a big key to the city because he earned it. With that in mind, remember, council, why don't we take about five minutes? And then we'll go in our closed session. But if there's nothing else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. There's no other comments or questions? All in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes 5-0. Everyone else, thank you for your time tonight and have a good evening.